Good evening, Eileen, can you please open the meeting?
Sure. Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting, Monday, June 24th, 2024. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open. Adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on December 11th, 2023, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Store Ledger. Second, on December 11th, 2023, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on December 11th, 2023, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider when reaching their decision, and the decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Barillo?
Here.
Mr. Cantor?
Here.
Mr. Hughes?
Here.
Mr. Mertens?
Here.
Mr. Orozco? I have not heard from. Mr. Stanton? I have not heard from. Mr. Ryan?
Present.
Ms. Scottson?
Here.
And Chairman Seiya?
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you. Everyone, please join for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Andy, please swear in the zoning board professionals.
Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, the hope we got?
I do.
Please state your name for the record.
Carl's Conliff.
Jennifer Beam.
Jerry Spiro.
Your professionals are sworn, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Eileen, any approval of minutes?
I have no minutes this evening.
Do we have any vouchers?
I have no vouchers this evening.
Any correspondence?
Yes, I have a letter and an email from John Sordo. He is the attorney for Cranberry Road Holdings, which is on tonight's agenda. At the time of the posting of the agenda, we did not have a date, so they have to be rescheduled with notice. They would like to be rescheduled to September 9th, and they've granted the board an extension of time through September.
Okay, so that anyone that's here for case number BA 23-18, Cranberry Road Holdings, this application is being rescheduled with notice to September 9th with extension of time to the end of September 2024.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Eileen.
And that's the only correspondence I have.
Great. Resolutions. Case number BA 21-19, Restoration Family Worship Resolution granting use variance and preliminary final site plan, eligible voters, Barillo, Cantor, Hughes, Merton, Scottson, and Seiya. Do we have a motion here?
I'll make a motion.
Hughes.
Second.
Mertens. Roll call, please.
Mr. Barillo?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Ms. Scottson?
Yes.
And Chairman Seiya?
Yes.
Motion carries resolution to memorialize.
Thank you. Okay, tonight, we have two applications in front of us to be heard. We're going to start off with case number BA 23-22, Infinity Plaza LLC. This is a conditional use variance and minor site plan with bulk variances. Description applicant seeking is seeking to construct a 4,500-square-foot warehouse expansion in SED-1 zone with other improvements. The applicant indicates that the existing and proposed use for the site is a trade contractor business use on premises known as Block 169, Lot 103, Lot 1.03, 400 Oakerson Road. Exploration date, July 24th, 2024. Mr. Alfieri.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman of the Board. Salvatore Alfieri, Cleary Giacobi Alfieri, and Jacob Zonby behalf of the applicant. This is an application, as the chairman summarized, for a small warehouse addition to an existing facility that's owned and operated by the applicant who's present this evening and who'll provide some operational testimony after our engineer. It's not for an expansion of their use, it's really just to accommodate the existing use. But again, we'll get into that momentarily. We have three witnesses that we're going to present. Rob Siv is our engineer. Michelle Garofalo is a principal of the applicant, and then Christine Caphone is our planner. Since there is devariance relief, obviously, that's why we're here. And we request that Mr. Siv be sworn in, please.
Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, the hope we got?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name for the record, spell your last.
Robert Siv, S-I-V, and Victor E. I'm a licensed professional engineer and professional planner, testifying today as a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I have over 29 years' experience, I'm a graduate of New Jersey Institute of Technology.
We accept your credentials, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Just hold on one minute, because I see Mr. Orozco just showed up.
Yep. Okay, Mr. Alfieri.
So, Mr. Siv, your office has been involved in this application since its inception, and you or your office under your supervision have prepared the plans in support of the application?
That's correct.
And the...
Mr. Alfieri?
Yes.
If I may. Charlie, can you give us a little background on this particular for the board members?
Yes, so this site previously had site plan approval, I believe, from the planning board. I think it dates back to the '90s. It was, I think, approved for an electrical-related company back in the time. There's a second-story mezzanine office, I believe some partial first-story office with an associated warehouse component inside the building. The site has an existing two-way movement driveway from Oakerson Road. There's parking along the north side of the building that's paved. Once you get back past the building, there's basically an existing stone or gravel storage area that was, I think, approved as part of the prior site plan approval. What they're here before us now is, I guess, to continue the use on the property, to kind of maybe, you know, it seems like they've been using maybe some outside storage, and their intent is to maybe move some of that, you know, into this additional building, and then also, you know, some of the warehouse space, maybe make it less cluttered. So they're proposing basically a 5,000-square-foot addition to the, if you're looking at the aerial that's shown here, this is just a cover sheet of the site plan. It would just be to the left-hand side of that, so I think that's the west. The north arrow there is correct.
That is correct.
And they're basically, they're proposing a breezeway between the two buildings, so it has a shared roofline, so it's technically all the same building. There's an existing stormwater management basin at the northwest corner of the site that captures runoff from the site, and then it ultimately discharges, you know, towards the Little League facility. I'll let Mr. Siv kind of get into more of what they're proposing with the site layout and everything like that.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. Alfieri.
Thank you, yes. And we had several technical review committee meetings with the board professionals, they were very helpful, and we've gotten to the point where we think we have relatively clean review letters. Mr. Siv, the exhibit that is on the screen now, we need to mark it, can you identify what that is?
I think the exhibit is the cover sheet...
I did mark it.
Okay, sorry. Is the cover sheet of our site plan. We have two exhibits that were submitted electronically.
This is the...
A-13.
So, yeah, there's two color exhibits. One is A-12, which is a colored aerial site display.
They're under exhibits, you gotta go.
And then A-13 is a colored aerial display of the neighborhood, including the site. So A-12 is more site-specific, and then A-13 is a broad, brush picture of the neighborhood. So if we can put A-12, and I have eight, I have 11 by 17 handouts, if the board wants them.
Okay. Yes, please.
This is A-12.
Do you want me to start this round?
No, you don't need to. Just the public can see it.
There's a photo here too, that tells him.
Thank you.
Okay, there we go. We're good, Charlie?
Which one are you looking for? That is A-12, so that'd be the good one to look at, correct? Thank you very much, Charlie. So what you're looking at is Exhibit A-12. As the chairman indicated, we're proposing to construct a 4,500-square-foot storage building addition to the west of the existing building within the open yard area, and connect that building with an 8-by-10 breezeway between the two buildings, the existing building on the right and the proposed building on the left. The primary exterior access to that building will be an overhead door that's in the rear of the property. Right where the hand is, correct? We are proposing to mitigate the stormwater runoff generated from the roof area by an underground exfiltration system dry well along the west side of the building. And then the other proposed site improvements we have is a 1,850-square-foot paved area within the northwesterly corner of the existing stone rear yard area, and that's to park some of the company vehicles and equipment. We are proposing some additional landscaping within the front of the property. And then as a result of the TRC meeting, we are proposing to curb and sidewalk the front of the property. We'll leave that up to the board if that's what you want. We are proposing it, it's there. And that is really the extent of the site improvements. It's really just an addition for the operations of the existing building. As Mr. Conliff indicated, this site was built as part of a 1990 site plan approval, and it's been operating as a trader, contractor's trade building for about 25 years now.
The, can you discuss just the site circulation and how that currently operates, and whether it's impacted in any way by the addition?
Right, so the existing driveway is off of Oakerson Road, is along the easterly or right-hand side of the screen on the property. It's a full movement, right, a full movement in-and-out driveway. There's 19 parking stalls along the left side or west side of that circulation driveway, which is paved and provides access to the rear of the property, which is the stone yard area. And then vehicles can drive through the gate that's separating the paved area from the stone yard area, turn around, and come out as needed.
And so it's not, the current circulation is not impacted in any way by this addition?
That's correct.
Are we complying with the EV statute and providing the one required space?
Correct, we are proposing to provide one EV-ready parking stall, which complies with the code.
What about landscaping? Are we enhancing in any way the landscaping from what it currently looks like?
We are. So there's two existing landscape islands along Oakerson Road that are nice. We are proposing a third one between the two that are there and our entrance driveway. We are also proposing some shade trees along the left or westerly property line, and then some additional landscaping in front of the proposed warehouse building. We did have a chance to meet with Sheri in the field to review that landscaping. Sheri, you can tell me if I'm wrong, but I think that's what we...
Yeah, overall, that was what we had discussed. I did want the bed that's along the existing parking stalls just to curve around, just to help block the side of that parking stall where you have the tree.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and just continue it.
All right, we can do that.
That's minor, and I just had just some minor comments on the landscaping. He also put landscaping around the flagpole. Typically, we ask for foundation landscaping around the sign. The sign is, you know, that's not changing, it's pretty much landscaped with rocks. So instead, I asked for foundation plantings around the base of the flagpole. So I was gonna just, the knockout roses, I was worried about the deer for those, so I had some, a few others I could give.
Sure, we could substitute the, what we propose is knockout roses around the flagpole to something else, that's not a problem.
You mentioned stormwater management. The, where is the basin currently located? And then, just again, describe generally how this will, this additional impervious coverage, how it will operate.
So the existing stormwater management basin's in the northwesterly corner of the property where that, I'll call it tanish hatching is. We are proposing an exfiltration dry well system parallel to the proposed warehouse addition, as shown on the screen, which is about 74 feet long by about 10 foot wide, which will handle and mitigate stormwater runoff from the proposed addition roof area.
Charlie, we're good with stormwater?
Yeah, I think the only outstanding comment I had was they're using some exfiltration in the routing analysis, so they'll just have to provide some testing just to confirm the rates used. If it's all good, then no changes. If it differs, then there might just need to be another row or a little bit longer trench or something like that, so.
Got it, thank you.
Rob, the fire official issued a letter in February, and then subsequently revised plans were submitted. Have you addressed the fire official's comments? And just if you have, just summarize what you did to address them.
I did. He was looking for the restriping of the fire lanes, so we proposed the four-inch yellow striping along the easterly or right-hand curb line, as you see on our site plan, and we're also proposing the fire lane, no parking markings in the drive aisle.
And of course, if the fire official issues a subsequent report, we would agree to address his comments, is that correct?
That's correct.
How about onsite parking? Are we compliant with the ordinance standards?
We are compliant with the ordinance standards. Let me just get to that page so that I speak accurately.
Got it.
Yeah, I got it, all right. The ordinance requires 300, one parking stall for every 300 square feet of office space. We have 4,900 square feet of office space, we need just a little over 16 parking stalls. The storage requires one stall for every 5,000 square feet between the existing building and the proposed addition. We would need two additional parking stalls. So we have 18 required for the building and the addition. We have 19 right now. We are actually converting one of the stalls to make it more ADA compliant, so we'll have 18 parking stalls that are required for ordinance. In addition, because this is a conditional use standard, we have to provide parking for the company vehicles. There are 12 company vehicles, five trailers, and then what I call five small equipment machines, which are like Bobcats or Skidsteers. And we do propose 17 parking stalls in the rear stone yard area, and then we also propose an area that's about 20 by 25 in the upper-left or northwesterly corner for those small equipment, Skidsteer, Bobcat-type equipment.
Can we just go back to the company vehicles? Because the information that we have says 21 company vehicles, not 12.
Yeah, I think you have the old site plans, the new ones show the 12 on...
So, and to clarify, Rob, because we discussed this earlier, so that 21 you said included like some heavy equipment, so like Bobcat or Skidsteer kind of stuff?
Right.
So how many of those are anticipated?
Again, there's 12 company vehicles and five trailers, so I totaled that to 17, including the trailers. And then I have five Skidsteers, Bobcat-type of machinery.
And that's going to be stored on what, asphalt?
Pavement, correct.
So typically, the board likes to see that stuff stored on concrete.
I don't think there would be an objection to, we have, like I said, the area that we're proposing to be paved. I'm sure the applicant would be willing to use concrete in lieu of pavement.
Yeah, the reason the board has historically required that is heavy equipment, diesel and hydraulics and things like that. If there's ever a leak, concrete pads are a little bit more resistant to degradation than the asphalt, so, understood, Mr.?
And the, as Sheri indicated, there's an existing sign, we're not proposing to change the sign in any way.
That's correct.
This is a conditional use, and we're here because we don't meet all the conditions, and I know Christine will get into it in more detail, but one of the conditions is the limitation on the number of, the size of the office space, which we exceed currently. We are not proposing any additional office space, is that correct?
That's correct. So the building already is noncompliant with the conditional use standards, which my guess is they weren't in place when the original site plan was approved back in 1990, just for the board's knowledge. There are, I think it's about 11 conditions. We meet all of them, but that one condition, which says no more than 25% of the interior space shall be devoted to office space. The existing building with the proposed addition will have the 4,900 square feet, which is existing, which is approximately 32% of the overall building space after the addition is constructed. Right now, we're well over that number as it exists today.
And...
We're actually making it a little bit more compliant than what the site is today.
And there's a whole series of waivers that Charlie outlines in more detail in his report, last revised June 21st. I don't think we need to get into any detail on those unless the board or the board professionals require it, otherwise, other than to state that if the board requires any of the information from which we are seeking waivers, we would certainly agree to provide it, is that correct?
That is correct.
And otherwise, that's all we have, Mr. Chair. Our planner will get into the details of the variances.
Okay, board members, anybody have questions?
Yeah, I have a couple.
Go ahead, Mr. Chair.
So the offices will remain in the existing building, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Unchanged.
Okay, great. The type of existing surface going back in the back right now, what kind of surface is that?
The existing rear storage yard area right now is a gravel-stone surface.
Okay, it's gravel-stone?
Except for we're proposing to pave or concrete that northwesterly corner.
Okay. And behind the building, this black shadow, is that a ramp going up to the, like a loading area?
No, that's just a shadow of the building itself. There is a concrete pad back there.
Okay.
But it's not an elevated ramp.
Yeah, it was kinda, okay.
Sorry, maybe I picked a bad image to use.
So if we approve this, this is going to be based on your application. I'm just looking down the road if you did resell it. They would have to come back, Jennifer?
If they were going to change anything, if it was the same use, it doesn't, it's not tied to the user, it's tied to the use. So if it was the same use...
Okay.
They wouldn't have to come back here.
I'm just concerned if it was down the road, they sell it, and then we're getting eight tractor-trailers in there, the site wouldn't be able to accommodate it, so.
So just to add to that, right, so they indicated they complied with all the conditional use requirements of our trade contractor businesses. Usually, any outdoor storage has to be in the rear, and it has to have like eight-foot-high fence around it, has to have setback from the property lines, minimum 10 feet, you know, can't stack anything more than eight feet. Rob, like, the compound that's there has an existing fence around it, right?
Correct, there's an eight-foot-high fence around the stoned area. It does meet the setback requirements, and it is in the rear yard area, so we do comply with those conditional use standards.
And you have existing vegetation, vegetated buffer that was installed when this got a site plan approval along the easterly property line, and then can you, what's to the north of you? Is that a stormwater basin lot behind you?
To the northeast is a stormwater basin lot. I believe directly behind us to the north is part of the Little League facility. It's the outfield to the bigger field.
Yeah, it is.
Gotcha. Yeah, so the likelihood of any, like, thing residential getting built there is next to zero.
Got it.
I think it's actually Green Acres, to be honest.
Is it?
Yeah.
I'm glad, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from board members?
Just to follow up.
Mr. Ryan?
The proposed paving area, what was your initial intent for that, going in there, since the rest of the area is stone?
So originally, we did not have any of the rear yard paved. We had the TRC meeting, and the board professionals indicated that the board likes to see some, I'll call it hard surface, whether it's concrete or pavement, for the storage of certain types of equipment. So that's why we proposed it. So originally, there was no intention to do that, other than to comply with the board's desires and to provide an area to park certain pieces of equipment.
Okay, is that where the heavier equipment is currently stored?
That's where we're going to store it, yes.
But is that where the equipment currently is stored?
Yes.
Where the existing gravel would be?
Yes.
And there's no leakage or anything from the vehicles that this is going to cover?
There's no leakage to my knowledge, no.
Thank you.
Can you talk a little bit about what's across Oakerson? So I know that there are, there's a planning board approval across the street. Currently, it's a farm. That planning board approval is in litigation. If it remained a farm, you require a 50-foot buffer.
That's correct. And the board, our planner will get into the variance that's required for that. There is, as Ms. Beam indicated, a farm across the street on Lot 7.05, and then just to the southeast of that is a cemetery. As this property was approved in 1990 as part of a site plan, there was no buffer associated with it then. There is the landscaping that we talked about, there's also our septic system that is in that location, and was approved as part of that site plan, and our planner will get into the variance and relief for that buffer.
Mr. Barillo?
Hi. I think you said it before, but what's the original building size? The original building size?
Square footage?
Yes.
It is 4,900 square feet of office and 5,900 square feet of storage space. Now, the 4,900 square feet is two stories, so it's roughly 2,400 square feet per floor. So if you're looking for like...
So office and storage?
Right.
And we're doing another 4,500 square feet of warehouse?
Of warehouse, correct.
Okay, what is the current building use? What are we, what's the business?
The applicant will be coming up next, she'll explain it in more detail.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Cantor? You're good? Ms. Scottson?
And forgive me, because of being somewhat new to just this whole thing, the, so I'm just looking at this with the existing basin and the location of how close it is to Little League Field. Have we had any past issues with regard to any water penetrations or flooding or anything over there?
Not that I know of.
Okay.
Yeah, and I would just add, they're not a major development, so they're not over a quarter acre new impervious, they're not an acre disturbance, so technically, there's no stormwater measurement requirement, but this board has historically required some mitigation, so they have the recharge. If it overflows, they provide a grading on the plan where it will overflow into the stormwater basin, so that area's not just running onto the Little League, so you've got kind of two levels of protection there.
Mr. Hughes?
Good, sir.
Mr. Orozco? Okay. Mr. Alfieri, next up.
Do you swear your testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, the hope we got?
Yes.
Please state your name for the record, spell your last.
Michelle Garofalo, G-A-R-O, F as in Frank, A-L-O.
Thank you. And Michelle, what is your affiliation with the applicant?
Member.
Member, you're a member with whom?
Infinity.
Well, who else is a member with you?
My husband.
Husband, and what, is your company currently the own, currently the occupant of this property?
Yes.
And what business do you run there?
We have East Coast Site Work, East Coast Fence, and All Seasons Maintenance.
And they're all owned by you?
Yes.
You and your husband?
Yes.
And they've been operating there since you bought the building?
Yes.
And when did you buy the building?
March of '21.
'21. And you, did you obtain a certificate of occupancy to occupy?
I'm sorry, '22, sorry.
March of '22. Did you obtain a CEO to occupy the building when you bought it? March of '22. Did you obtain a CEO to occupy the building when you bought it?
Yes.
Now, is there going to be any change or intensification of your business as a result of this addition?
No.
What's the purpose of the addition?
More inside storage with climate control.
And currently, and what would you store in there that's climate control?
Wood, wood project, wood projects that are needed, I'm sorry, all wood type of fence and anything wood related needs to be in a climate control warehouse, otherwise it gets moldy, ruined, and rots.
So currently, that's all site?
Currently.
Your storage of yours?
Currently, we have a lot of molded and rot that we had to throw out. How's that?
There'll be no fabrication or mechanical work on site, is that correct?
No.
Purely storage and your business offices?
Yes.
And you, we, the office space, we indicated we're not expanding, and is that correct?
Right, correct.
How many employees are on site during your peak hours?
Three to four.
And there, and you have other employees, but they all work off-site, I assume?
Yes.
What about your hours of, normal hours of operation?
Anywhere between 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
On-site again?
Yes.
Then, the types of deliveries that you get are primarily box trucks deliveries?
Well, we get anywhere from a 20-footer to a 40-footer, to, that's a trailer, and about two to three deliveries a month.
Two to three total deliveries a month?
Yes.
Okay. And they currently are able to access the site and make a turn in the back and leave?
Yes, yes.
So that's not changing in any way?
No.
Can you walk us through that a little slower?
Okay, Michelle.
Sorry. So, a 20- to 40-footer, maybe a tractor-trailer, like, it needs, we need to go a little slower, so we can get it down exactly what's happening.
Okay, well, depends on the order, the product, and the month. Of course, in the winter months, you probably don't get a lot of orders at all. So depending on that month, you can see-
Let's just take the peak month.
Okay.
The highest delivery month.
You can get probably one box truck and two trailers.
Per month?
Tractor-trailers.
Yes, per month.
And that's not changing from the current operation?
Right.
Just trying to think if there was another, oh, there was a question about the, where the, the equipment that we're proposing now to install, to store on, on either the paved and/or concrete area.
Mm-hmm.
Has there been any leaks in it, from the equipment that was been parking there before while it was on gravel?
No.
And in terms of the stormwater management basin, have there been any flooding or drainage issues during your ownership?
No.
And is it correct that the Little League Field is directly behind the property?
Yes.
Okay. And there's no issues with your business interfering with the Little League Field in any way?
No.
Okay.
I'm surprised there hasn't been any balls, but no.
Alright. And then, in terms of the HVAC system, you were proposing to install that in that center connected area, is that correct?
Yes.
That's where, and that HVAC would be for the new building, not for the existing?
Right.
Okay, I think that's all we have, unless you have more specific questions.
So, can, who was the, the third operations, the third, I won't say operations, but you said East Coast Site Work, East Coast Fence, and what was the property management, or what was the last, the third one?
All Seasons Maintenance.
Maintenance, All Seasons Maintenance?
Yes.
Okay. And then the 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., was that seven days a week? What were it?
No, Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday. And then, the last thing on that I would say is, obviously, you know, had some questions about stormwater management and how, you know, no known issues. I would just say, recommend that the board make a condition that, like, no removal of the fence around the stormwater basin, so that way, there can't be any storage of equipment or materials or anything inside the stormwater basin, because then that would, you know, potentially impact the functioning of the basin. So, is that some of the applicant's medical?
That's why, that's why we have no intention of removing it.
Okay. I think that's really all I have for the applicant, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Board members?
Hi. Hi. East Coast fencing is, that's pretty obvious. East Coast Site Work and All Seasons Maintenance, can you explain that a little more in detail?
Sure.
What, what those are?
East Coast Fence, is it just?
Yes.
A new name of a company, because we're East Coast Site Work, we don't do site work? So a lot of people get confused on the name. So we opened it under a new name, East Coast Fence, to make it easier.
What's East Coast Site Work do?
The same thing that East Coast Fence does, it's just that we get a lot of confusion.
Okay.
A lot of people come to us thinking that we're a site work company, that we're going to go do all these improvements and rub areas, but that's not what we do. So we figured if we changed the name, but kept the existing name, that's why.
And All Seasons Maintenance?
Um, All Seasons Maintenance does some cleaning for builders.
Some cleaning for-
For builders. We work for builders.
And that's all done off-site?
Off-site. They're not, there's, nobody comes to the office. It's only the secretary processing the bills and the payroll.
So, so the proposed warehouse is mostly going to be for your wood that is currently molding and rotting, because it's not temperature controlled?
Right, correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, Mr. Cantor? Just out of curiosity, what is on the south, I guess, west corner, where you're putting in the three trees, but there's space between the warehouses and the, and the road? It looks green. Is that trees, or is that just?
Well, bushes.
Oh, it's bushes, okay. So they're all, that's all staying there, that's?
Yes.
Anyone else?
Yeah. Refuge. I don't see any place on here. What do you normally?
We have it existing. We're not really creating anything more. So what we have is applicable to, to our needs.
Yeah, it's in the back right corner.
Is it enclosed?
Yes.
With what?
Chain link fence.
So we typically require masonry enclosure?
Okay.
And do you have any bulk storage anywhere's, as far as like, any material that you would require to put it like into a storage, you know, outdoor bin? Not that you're doing landscaping work, but anything, stones or anything?
No.
Okay. And the trucks that you have there, you said you only have two or three people working in the office. What about the people that come in and operate the trucks? Where do they normally park?
Well, they park in the parking lot, but it's only about three people. Everybody else takes their trucks home. Nobody comes there unless they have to pick something up real quick.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, Charlie, Jen, we're good up till this point? Sherry? Okay. Mr. Alfieri?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're now calling Christine Cofone, our planner.
Andy?
Yes.
State your name for the record, spell your last.
Good evening, it's Christine Nazaro, N-A-Z-Z-A-R-O, Cofone, C-O-F-O-N-E. Business address is 125 Half Mile Road, Suite 200, Red Bank, New Jersey, 07701. I'm testifying this evening as a licensed professional planner. I've testified here many, many times and before hundreds of other boards throughout the state, and my licenses are current and valid.
We'll accept your credentials, Ms. Cofone.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Cofone. You heard the testimony. You've obviously participated in the TRCs, and you're familiar with the site, I assume?
Yes.
Would you describe for the board the variance relief that's required, and then place the justifications on the record?
Yeah, so this is really a very substantially conforming application. It's located in the SED 1 zone, where trade contractor uses, trade contractor uses were amended, the ordinance was amended to actually allow them conditionally with nine conditions. The reason we're here seeking the D3 variance is not because the use is not allowed, but because we violate two of the conditions. So, a little bit different than other zoning board of adjustment cases that you hear, where you hear the planner talk about particular suitability, particular suitability and the Medici reconciliation. We have a little bit less of a burden of proof when you're dealing with a conditional use standard, right? The proof that the planner has to demonstrate is that absent compliance with those conditional use standards, that this still remains an appropriate location. So it is definitely a lesser standard of proof than for those uses that aren't permitted in the zone. The two conditions that we don't comply with, as was testified by Mr. Siv, are the fact that the ordinance restricts office space to 25% of the floor area. So when you look at the fact that we're introducing an additional building with only warehouse, we're actually diluting a little bit the percentage of, of office, right? Because that's a nonconforming condition that exists on the property today. So that's the one that we don't violate, the other, we don't comply with. The other one that we don't comply with is the fact that the last condition in the ordinance requires that we provide a 50-foot farmland buffer. Now, even, it is an active farmland across the street from us to our south, across Oakerson Road, despite the fact that there is a commercial approval on that, that's under, the board approved it, and it's up on litigation. But right now, as it sits today, that we need that relief. So it is an existing condition essentially because the, the buffer is not provided there. But when you look at the aerial that's in evidence, you can see that there is, there is vegetation there. We are supplementing the vegetation, and we are providing, or at least expressed a willingness to provide the curb and sidewalk along Oakerson. So we are certainly upgrading the, the curb appeal of the site. The other thing that we're doing is we're actually improving the facade of the existing structure to, to be sympathetic to and coordinate with the new building that we're proposing, the new portion of the building that we're proposing. So as far as the curb appeal and the view along Oakerson Road, I think with the approval, the, if the board were so inclined to approve it, I think the board would be very comfortable that we would be improving actually the facade of Oakerson Road and the view shed and the curb appeal of the site from what exists today. And I think that we certainly, absent complying with those two, two standards, it still is an appropriate location.
Just, just to follow up, the, the proposed improvements, meaning the addition to the building and the paving in the back, nowhere near encroach on that 50-foot, correct?
They're nowhere near it, right. So we are, there's really, I mean, our setbacks, this is not an issue of putting a building here and asking for buffer relief so that we could put a, a bigger building or have a little bit less parking. We are nowhere near violating any setbacks or coverage. So this is not an intensity issue. It's just that that's an existing condition on the property, and where we're proposing to, to make improvements is in a completely conforming location. So, yes, there's-
And you, and you mentioned the improvement to the exterior of the building. We did submit an exhibit today to show the board the rendering?
Yeah, I think it would be-
Or the elevation?
Great if we could pull it up, because it's actually, yeah, there it is. It looks very nice, right? We, we worked, we worked hard to, to come up with a structure that we had both vertical and horizontal breaks in it to meet the, the requirements in the ordinance, and to provide the, the buildings, you know, improvement to the existing building, so that architecturally, it didn't look peculiar or unusual with the new building, not, not looking sympathetic or somewhat campus-like to the existing structure. And I think that the applicant, you know, what you see before you is, is probably our sixth or seventh generation of that building. We really did dot our i's and cross our t's to try to, to deliver something that looked good. And I think, I think certainly, the board could look at criteria I, creating a desirable visual environment, and satisfaction of the positive criteria. But in addition to criteria I, I think the board could look at criteria G, which talks about sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses. The master plan in 2019 specifically recommended that trade contractor uses be defined and allowed here conditionally. So I do think it's an appropriate location. But then I also think that criteria M, which talks about an efficient use of the land, is appropriate here, because the master plan talks, again, very specifically, about channeling and focusing economic development opportunities in strategic locations in areas where there's existing development. So I think we satisfy that, too. So statutorily, from a planning point of view, I think we absolutely meet our burden of proof for the D3 Coventry Square variance. I think we satisfy multiple purposes of the municipal land use law. We would really need only to satisfy one, to meet our burden of proof, but I believe we satisfy three of the positive criteria, I, G, and M. And as far as the negative criteria, asks you to not hold the applicant that there be no detriment, but just that the benefits of the ground of the variance outweigh any detriment. And here you have a situation where we can increase the concrete on site to park some of the trucks, that we are improving the curb appeal architecturally, we are providing sidewalks, and we're providing some additional landscaping. So when we look at all of that on balance, right, which is what we do as planners, I think the board can be comfortable that, that none of the, rises to a substantial detriment, and that there are definitely betterments, planning betterments associated with this application.
Thank you, Mr. Cofone. Jen?
I don't take exception to the testimony. I just want to clarify something, because when, when there was a question earlier about the dark area in front of the proposed warehouse addition by those three trees, and it was identified as shrubs, it's grass. It's not shrubs. So I just want everyone to be abundantly clear, that it's not like there's going to be this big visual impediment to seeing the building. It's just lawn.
Thank you, Jen. Board members, any questions for the planner? No? Say we open up to public? We got a motion to open public? We got a second? All in favor?
Alright.
Eileen, we're opening to public.
This time, the chairman's opened the hearing up for members of the public who have questions or comments regarding this application. If anyone wants to speak, please come up to the podium. You will need to be sworn in and give your name and address.
He swears the testimony, he gives the truth, the whole truth, the truth to help you out. Please state your name for the record and spell your last.
Kathy Oakerson, O-K-E-R-S-O-N. And you said that across the street from this building, that is farm?
Yes, I'm aware.
Yeah, but that is not going to be developed, because that is our farm. And we've already had a tractor-trailer in our farm, because they cannot make that turn in there. So are they going to do anything to make it more accessible to your tractor-trailers that pull in?
Yeah, the, the tractor-trailers are going to pull in to the back of the building, and there's adequate room for them to back up.
I'm talking about them getting in there from Oakerson Road. They have a problem getting into there, and they have a problem getting out. And you can see there's a little curve there, that people coming down Oakerson Road, since we have the people down the street that fix the souped-up cars, if they're coming down there, they can't always see that tractor-trailer in the middle of the road. And you're not going to touch the buffers on either side?
We are not, no.
So I don't have a problem with that. If you can do something about getting those tractor-trailers in a little bit easier, because right now, they have a terrible time getting in there, from sitting at the house, watching them try it, and having one in the field.
Charlie?
Yeah, so this might be a question for Mr. Siv. You know, they are doing curb and sidewalk along the frontage, so they're going to have to do some, you know, at the driveway. It could be possible that they could adjust the radius to maybe make the turning movements a little bit easier with that.
Right, for the trailer.
So as we can, as we're doing the curb, we can increase those curb radiuses to widen them a little bit?
Yeah, so they could get in there?
Agreed, yes.
Okay.
We are substantially below the impervious coverage, so it would not be an issue. The impervious coverage allowable here is 70%, and we're at about 35%. So if that driveway were widened and additional impervious had to be created, I don't think it would be problematic.
Charlie?
So we would agree to work with Charlie, too, on that design.
Andy, you catching the horse?
I am, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Question?
Yeah, just to be clear, Lot 6, which one is, is?
Ms. Oakerson?
Yeah.
Which lot are you?
Right across the street from you.
That one, Lot 705.
Yeah, that's not going to be developed.
Okay.
I want to move forward to get that one.
In form preservation.
Yep.
Lot 501 is the one that has the approval, which is on the other side of the cemetery.
Okay, thank you. Being the form that looks at it, I don't care about it.
So, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You have to come up, sir, if you want to speak.
Okay. Anyone else from public? Not hearing, not seeing any? Can we have, close it to public, please? We got a motion to close, second?
Second.
We got a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Eileen, we're close to public.
Public is now closed.
Okay, Mr. Alfieri?
So thank you, Ms. Chair, and members of the board. Again, we're, it's, the application is not for an intensification of a use. It's really to accommodate the purpose that the applicant indicated for the wood. We've agreed to meet all the conditions of the board's professional reports, and in fact, this is, we're now going to enhance the site by providing the landscaping upfront, now addressing this, the, the curb radius, putting curbs and sidewalk now addressing this, the curb radius, putting curbs and sidewalk in, putting paving in the back, putting a masonry structure around the existing refuse area. And in terms of stormwater management, we're addressing that beyond what we're required to do, but to accommodate the board's professionals' report. So as a result, we'd ask that the board grant the approval with all the conditions we've stipulated.
Thank you, Mr. Alfieri. Charlie, you want to say something?
Yeah, just two last quick comments. So I know Mr. Ryan asked about, you know, prior spills and everything in the concrete pad. Similar type of applications in the past, the board has, like, were kind of conditioned for the applicant to, like, agree to have a spill kit on site. Is that something they'd be amenable to, Sal?
They have one.
They have one, but yes, that's.
Good, simple, right? And then I think it's just an important distinction, right? You know, they talked about one of the users was like site work in the name, right? And we say, no, it's just a fence company. You know, based off of their representation of the use with, like, the type of equipment, bobcats, skid steer, stuff like that, like, I wouldn't classify that as, like, being in the realm of doing site work. You know, you'd be thinking, like, front-end loaders, you know, big excavators and things like that. So I think that's an important distinction for the resolution because this property could get sold down the line because heavy site construction is a lot different than trade contractor business, so.
Thank you, Charlie. Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Before we vote, are we all in agreement? I, I, I think sidewalk needs to be there.
Yes, with the turn radius.
Yeah, okay, so we can listen.
Is that going to improve widening there?
The right, the right, the turn radius.
Yes, the turn radius.
And in and out, yep.
Oh? Thank you.
Mr. Cantor?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like you to make a motion that we approve the conditional use variance and minor site plan with bulk variances, saw it with all of the conditions stipulated, including the request by the owner from across the street to make sure that the curbing is appropriate to accommodate trailers.
Okay, we got a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Thank you.
Anne Marie's actually not allowed to vote.
Oh.
Oh, sorry, Anne Marie. In that case.
So Mr. Hughes, we got, you're second in it, Mr. Hughes?
Mr. Orozco did.
Mr. Orozco seconds it. Eileen, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Farillo?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
And Chairman Seiya?
Yes.
Motion carries up.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, everybody's good? Do we need five minutes, or we're good?
You can say five minutes.
Yes?
Well, thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, love.
Eileen, we're going to take five.
The board will now take a five-minute recess. They'll be back at eight o'clock.
In the last year, we have, like, our associate program to get into the stock. I was still in the associate program. We had, like, the year-round, like, FBO works downstairs and works on it. And every when they, they were having the World Cup last year, it was like, I was seven hours, like, three people.
I have no idea. That's not ours.
Yeah, I had on my phone, yeah. So, like, watching games.
We'd be lawsuit-free.
Get a notification, like, update.
It's entirely been here anyway.
Exactly. I was in front of, like, Gary Dawes and all that. It was like, great.
That was not, like, I did not click on, like, the big disconnect.
Oh, yeah.
All right. I was in Eaton Town Council.
Charlie.
How you doing, Jen?
Final story.
How fast, how fast?
Boy, they could, they could go ninety.
Yeah.
The volume.
That happened in Hockenham. Someone's come back.
Looking at me like.
Yeah. You've been there representing him for a long time. Yeah, yeah, so they didn't really.
I was pretty.
It went pretty smoothly. I'm sure you had a joke.
It's one thing if you actually have a business, but if you're just, like, a creative business, it's like. That's like Dennis.
Yeah.
You don't want to. You start talking, and then you're going to start talking, and then the next thing is, like, two hours. Or exhibits?
Exhibits. We may have submitted them, we're not, they weren't sure if I did it, I'm not sure if they did it, so.
Probably no one did it.
Yeah. Come on, Sal. It's hard to keep track. They all look alike, they all look alike.
So Bob, who that's written in your office, huh?
Yes.
You called Christine Japp the last year.
Who did? Bob? How'd that go?
Not great.
I mean, I called my own wife, Jen, at a meeting here, so I can't really say anything.
They should have told you because it was teed up for that to happen. The problem is, athletic uses is the problem, it's the guy.
Yeah, I know. It's, it's, it's.
Yeah, but I said something to Ken multiple times, like, this is how you're supposed to get someone by building, I guess.
It's hard to.
I, I think it's.
Weird building, yeah, I know. I got that message.
Yeah.
But yeah, when I look up, I'm afraid, like, to talk to four thousand. Yeah. If you have a time, you can. You going to Jersey City tomorrow?
No. Should I have it?
No.
Oh, yeah, no.
I had to say, Jeff's acting very politely, we're not doing any more work for you until you get. I mean, he's been promising for over a year, and it's like, and he sends me, and he's like, I think these revisions, we're going to miss our date in July. I was just, Jeff, you're going to miss your date in July, I'm just telling you right now.
That's right, yeah.
It's like, I've tried to be as cordial about this as I can, but. Just so you could say something to the character. I've been your one.
I gave you the last one.
We noticed.
I gave you the other one, too.
You did?
I know, I haven't.
That's right, you said one last night.
Oh, yeah, that's the second one.
Friday, so she was seven. Two weeks in a row for a site.
Just in case you have any questions, you better know. How much do you know to call you on Friday morning?
That's a good way to remember.
But Friday morning, after, like, three weeks in a row, like, forty.
Yeah. No, we don't write the architecture.
Now, you can't even think straight. That's great.
Thank you.
I mean, Sal, I'll leave it to you, Warren, so, you know, some of the time, you're going to have questions. I don't want to prolong it, Sal.
Yeah. And then, um, I don't know if you want to just take a quick look at these before, just to make sure. They gave me a thumb drive, I didn't see them in the exhibit list, so I don't know if you just need to re-mark them as a part of.
They might have to, yeah.
Christine, if they want the operation.
Would they send you all this?
I just sent a USB drive.
You didn't, so you didn't send any of them to me, so we have to mark them as well.
Well, it's different.
Well, this will start with A.
No, I have some premarked.
Okay. Thanks.
So if I got to announce, I'm going to probably put at least three.
Yeah.
I'll see. That's fine, that'd be great. Excellent. That's great.
I have one with a couple of minor comments from Brian Murphy, which is the last one I have, so I don't have your final.
That's what I was saying.
Yeah, so you have.
From Mur.
Sal sent you one on the 11th, or no, on June 12th, Sal sent.
Restory, and then Charlie had comments, too.
Charlie's were before Sal.
Sal's were June.
Yeah, I don't like that angle. It's not really a good angle here. Yeah, should we move, should we move over?
So you do it in sentences, right?
Yeah, because like I say, it might be better if we move over. I'll talk to Sal. Because is that microphone?
Game seven.
I'm sorry? Yeah. Who, Sal?
My mic's, I'm blinded. I can't land.
Who's using the laser beam, this gentleman? Eric, you can move over here.
That's it there?
There's, that's a mic on the table.
Yeah. Sal, let's slide over one.
Try not to blind our board.
When I'm pointing the, the.
You can stay there, I'll stay here.
Oh, there we go.
Sal likes that table.
Eileen?
Good luck, so far.
The board's back.
The zoning board will now reconvene.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Case number BA23-07, U-Haul Company of New Jersey. This is a use variance, preliminary and final major site plan with bulk variances. Application of U-Haul Company of New Jersey to construct a 17,286-square-foot portable storage unit facility on existing lot 100.01. The applicant also proposes to consolidate lots 95.01 and 100.01 on premises known as Block 144, lots 95.01, 100.01, 1401 through 1429, U.S. Highway North. Expiration date, July 16th, 2024. Mr. Alfieri?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Salvatore Alfieri, Cleary Giacobi Alfieri, and Jacobs on behalf of the applicant. Do you want Charlie to summarize it first?
No.
No? Can you jump right in?
Aren't you the same guy that was just here?
Yeah.
Loves us so much.
I always say we all look alike, us lawyers, but.
Very much alike.
So this, as you, as the board knows, there's an existing self, U-Haul self-storage facility to the south, I guess it is, and now they bought the piece to the north where the jug handle is, and they're proposing the new use. We're going to consolidate the two lots. We have, we've received an NJ DOT permit since we're on the state highway. We have a traffic engineer here, in case you have questions, but the DOT granted the permit, so we think that that should cover the traffic, and it's a state highway, obviously. We also have an architect here, if you had questions with the architect, but we have agreed and we've been working with Jen to address any architectural concern she has. So our intent is to call our engineer, Eric, and then Christine Cuffone, a representative from U-Haul's here, if you have specific operational questions as well.
Okay, great, thank you, sir.
Eric, we're going to swear you in. He swears the testimony you give will be the truth of the truth, nothing but the truth of the body.
I do.
Please state your name for the record, spell your last.
Eric Ballou, B-A-L-L-O-U. I serve as a partner at Insight Engineering. I've done this for approximately 28 years, been qualified by over 30 boards. Now, I have been qualified by this board, I did testify in front of the planning board in, like, 2017. I have testified in numerous boards within Monmouth County, within Long Branch, Marlboro, Ocean Township.
You're licensed in the state of New Jersey, sir?
I am licensed in New Jersey, and it's in good standing as well.
It's a good standing. Where'd you go to school, sir?
I went to school at University of Massachusetts.
Oh, my goodness.
I'm a transplant, I've been here longer than Massachusetts.
Well, we'll accept your curricula, sir.
Mr. Chair, I can attest to the fact that Mr. Ballou and I have worked together in the past.
Yes.
It's a small group.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, and Mr. Ballou, your office or Insight, through your partners and yourself, have been involved in the preparation of the plans since the inception of this particular application, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, so can you describe for the board what, well, first of all, we're going to refer to exhibits. Can, has this exhibit been previously submitted, Eileen?
No, so that's going to be 826.
So Eric, can you identify what 826 is, please?
Yeah, so 826 is an existing aerial exhibit that uses a September 2023 near map aerial image. So this is really to give an understanding of the project site and the surrounding area. So the, the building right here that you can see, so that's the existing U-Haul building that's on lot 95.01, which is about 4.9 acres. Then to the north of that, that's where we have the second lot, which is lot 100.01, which is approximately another three acres. So the overall property is 7.9 acres. As you can see, you know, towards the western side, we have the Route 9 right-of-way, which is approximately 120 foot of width, as well as we have across, further west to Route 9 is going to be a residential use, is our understanding, a residential zone. The other residential portion that we have is actually in the southeast portion, there actually is a residential building that's in the southeast portion that exists there today. To the south of us, we have the Garden Center that's there, and to the north of the property, we have the Atlantic Fence Company. So we have commercial, sort of a combination of commercial uses, north and south, and some residential, east and west of us. The property does have some unique features. There is a stream along the eastern, the rear portion of the property. Associated with that, we have restrictions. The state imposed 150-foot-wide riparian buffer that we got DEP approval for. Your ordinance has a 100-foot stream corridor from the stream, but then you have to add another 100 feet for the actual buffer, so it's basically 200 feet. So that's the furthest line that's back. Besides the stream corridor riparian buffers, we also have in this area, we also have wetlands and associated transition area. So there are definitely some environmental constraints as part of this project. The other constraint, and sort of creates an irregularity with the property, is we actually have the jug handle along our frontage. And the jug handle, the total width in the front is almost 110 feet beyond this typical right-of-way that exists around Route 9. So we definitely had some challenges with this property to make everything fit and work properly. If we could advance to the next slide. Okay, so this, I believe, would be.
827.
827. So what 827 is, is using that same near map aerial image, and it's superimposed the colored rendering of the project to really mainly show that majority of what we're talking about for the improvements are really in the northeast portion of the project. We talked about the residential portion of the property here, and you can see we're not really proposing any real improvements adjacent to where that existing residential use is. So let's just give you some context of the area that we'll be discussing. The next exhibit I have, 828.
Mr. Ballou?
Eric? Yes.
Isn't there a billboard over there?
Yes.
There is, so we're going to go through some more details.
You taking that out?
No.
No, so, so I wanted to get into, this is the rendered site plan, 827, still has the aerial image.
828.
828, with the aerial image, with the rendered site plan, a sort of a better scale to go through additional details, such as there's an existing billboard on that property that's proposed to remain in front of this proposed building. So that will be, that will actually remain as part of our project, is our proposal.
So Jen?
Yes, sir.
That requires an additional variance, then?
Yeah.
Yeah, multiple principal uses on a single lot.
Okay, Mr. Ballou?
Understood. So, we'll start out with the building. So, right, what we're proposing is a 17,286 square foot, one-story building that's going to house what we call U-boxes. They're basically self-contained storage units, and these U-boxes are about five foot wide by eight foot length, about seven and a half foot in height. So, this building is proposed to store the U-boxes that U-Haul has as one of their products. It's one of those situations, you can have it dropped off at your house, you fill it up, they come and get it, and they need to bring it somewhere. This is going to be a building where they would actually store a U-box. The building itself complies with the front and rear setbacks, but we are asking for relief for the side yard setback adjacent to where the Atlantic Fence property is. We're supposed to be at 44.94 foot of setback, which is equal to our building height, which is compliant. We're proposing a setback of 36 by .1 foot. So, we are requesting a variance for some side yard setback, and when we get through some of the testimony, we'll get through some of the reasons why that is. Okay, so now that we have the building, if we could zoom out just a little bit, first thing, we'll go through even a little bit more, if possible. There we go, that's perfect. Okay, so, so now that we have the building placed, now we'll talk about vehicular circulation. So, we're proposing an egress lane that will go on to Route 9, sort of adjacent to where the cul-de-sac, the jug handle is now, so that'll be an egress lane. Right now, we're proposing that as 20 feet, 25 feet is the actual minimum for aisles, but we're requesting relief to go down to 20 feet to decrease the amount of impervious coverage. And the 20 feet, we still feel is very appropriate because it meets fire lane requirements, was approved by the fire official, and is only one way out of the site. So, we are asking for relief on a little bit of decrease in width. The other proposed driveway we have is an egress into the facility. And again, both of these driveways were already approved in NJ DOT access permit. Internal to the site, we do allow, we have full circulation around the entire building, but we also have an interconnection aisle that connects the new building to the existing circulation pattern of the existing building. So, we have an internal connection that will connect these two buildings operationally. Behind the building that we have proposed is, we have a loading dock at the back of the building. This is to allow the truck that brings the U-boxes to the facility, they'll use the dock leveller here, and it'll allow the packages, the U-boxes, to be moved into the building. One key component of this building, this is only for employee access only. So, this is not for the patrons or the customers of U-Haul. They will not be utilizing this facility. This will be U-Haul employees only within this building. Between the two buildings that we have, in this area here between, this is a proposed building, then the existing building, so in this area here, that's where we have what we call truck parking and shunting area. So, what this area provides is an area that can actually locate the different products that U-Haul has to offer in regards to truck rentals and trailer rentals. So, this will allow the rental vehicles and trailers to be staged in this area, so when people come to rent a vehicle, they'll have them ready for them to utilize. So, what they do in these staging areas, when someone wants to actually rent the truck, they'll actually drive it to the front of the existing building, so the place, so, no problem, thank you. So, since we're trying to keep everyone away from the new proposed U-box building, we're going to utilize the public really having access to the existing building. So, if they were to get a vehicle, they would stage that in the front of this building here, and then they could draw, utilize the existing driveway and leave the facility. When they come to return the vehicle, they would come in on the southern side of the existing building, leave the vehicle there, where the employees would clean out the vehicle, then the employees would go counterclockwise around the building, down through the aisle that we have, interconnecting them, and then place that vehicle back within the shunting staging area. And then this would keep occurring until all the trucks were utilized or, or all the service needs of the patrons were, were done. So, we have this U-Haul truck rental portion as part of this project.
Mr. Ballou, is that only trucks, or is it trailers as well?
It is trucks and trailers.
So, then, in the existing U-Haul facility that's there now, you have a full service, customer service area that will outfit for the hooking up to trucks and other vehicles?
Actually, this portion, I guess I'd call that the southwest portion of the building right now, actually has an area that can fit the vehicles for hitch, if they need a hitch. This portion of the building now can fit that vehicle with a hitch for, to receive the trailer. And there's different kinds of trailers. Some are for the actual U-boxes itself, you could run a trailer, and then there's small trailers you could rent just to have a tow behind to, to put things inside as well.
So, and before you go to that, so, the actual, like, retail sales component of the U-boxes and the trailers, does that happen in the existing building, or is there a space in the new building for that to occur?
So, all of that will occur in the existing building. So, right here is sort of where the front door is, and then inside this building, in a sense, that's where the, there's available people there to talk to. There's even shipping supplies and small retail type of uses associated. So, your customer service aspects will occur within the existing building as done today.
So, the only U-Haul employees in the new building is just literally just for unloading and offloading the, the containers, the U-boxes?
Correct. This is really U-box storage. There is a U-box component that does occur today within the existing building, but this will enhance that service by providing more opportunities for U-box storage. And to accomplish this, I know we're talking about operations sort of along the way, so right now, the applicant's anticipating about six maximum employees for a shift that would satisfy the needs for both buildings.
Mr. Ballou? Go ahead, Mr. Ryan.
Is the truck rental and the trailer rental, is that part of the existing business that's there now?
I don't, I don't believe so, no.
Is that going to affect the U-Haul rental at the gas station down by Home Depot?
We, we did talk about that. We think there, anytime we do something different, there's always an effect. What that effect will be, will be, time will tell, because in a sense, by having an opportunity here, it would allow, if the other facility, the present business, became overwhelmed and needed more trucks, this would provide an opportunity for them to actually, in a sense, delegate them to another facility. They're both owned by U-Haul themselves, so really, they would both be interacting with each other as needed.
Okay, thank you. So, and to give the board some context, so, the original approval predates my time, but I did read the resolution. My understanding that when the original facility was built, there was like a restriction on no, no pot containers like outside of the building and things like that, because the board was concerned about circulation, things like that, and I think there might also been similar restriction on, like, the rental of vehicles and parking throughout the site.
I can give you a little context. Mr. Say, you probably remember this, right? When we kept asking what exactly was going to be out, stored out front, what, how many vehicles, what kind of vehicles, what was happening, they couldn't tell us exactly what they, what was going to go there, and we went through multiple iterations of that question, and they could not answer us, so they, ultimately, they decided to take it out of the approval so that the building could move forward. That's kind of what, so, I will say that I'm not asking for an answer today, but as we typically do, because these vehicles are going to be stored outside, we would like an inventory of what is going to be out there.
So, so right now, I could say that what's envisioned right now is the various trucks that they have. So, there's a combination of the trailers, some, there's actually vans, they have vans, and then they have various sized box trucks. These are interior dimensions, if you go to their website, that range from a 10-foot box truck to a 26-foot long box truck interior dimensions. So, that's to give an understanding of the types of vehicles that would be stored within this shunting area.
Right, but I think the question was, how many?
I got it.
And I thought they could not, the representative from U-Haul was asked on multiple occasions to give us an inventory of what was going to be stored, how many and what type, and we couldn't get a straight answer, so that's why it was abandoned.
These are our estimates. Approximately seven cargo vans, six of the 10-foot box trucks, 10 of the 15-foot box trucks, two of the 20-foot box trucks, and two of the 26 box trucks plus trailers. And again, this is, you know, it's customer-driven, but these are sort of the anticipated numbers anticipated for this site.
And none of that's going to be stored in the front yard, correct?
Correct.
You don't allow outdoor stuff?
Right.
That's all in the staging area.
Right, it's all in the shunting area here, on this plan.
I just want to make sure I have the number correctly. You said the six of the 10-foot box trucks and two of the 20, what was the in-between that 10 and the 20?
10 of 15.
10 of the 15s.
I think that depends on...
So, I would say that technically is in the front yard, because that jug handle is right there, so, Miss Caphone?
So, I think there's one row that would be requested relief for within the front row.
So, Miss Caphone can address that when she comes up to address her testimony.
And, and you said trailers is like, so these are like box trailers, or just like a flatbed trailer, or?
It'd be a combination. So, the, the flatbeds would be the ones that receive the U-boxes, so they're, they're flat, but there are some of the trailers that are sort of tow behinds that would be of upgrade.
Okay. Would the applicant be amenable, just showing like a schematic diagram of these type of vehicles in the shunting area, just as a condition of approval, just demonstrating that it can fit? I know, like, the inventory probably is going to vary throughout the year depending on, like, you know, maybe people renting from a different facility and bringing here. I just, I think we want to demonstrate that that shunting area can accommodate kind of what you're anticipating.
The answer is yes. I just, so we would show a schematic layout, we would probably put a note on there, subject to change based upon demand, but we would show the schematics of the numbers I put on the record now, how that fits on this document. So, that's vehicular circulation. So, then there's still pedestrian. So, in regards to pedestrian circulation, it is limited for this type of site, but we do have a walkway that's proposed along the new building, that, that's adjacent to where the, the seven parking spaces are, and we'll get into a little bit more detail. In your ordinance, though, there are different pedestrian circulation sections that we do need to address. So, ordinance 188-132A, that requires to have sidewalks along your entire frontage. And I'll go through all of them, then I'll go through the rationale after that. 188-225G requires a private walkway from your site to connect to those public walkways. And then there's 188-225F, that requires a publicly usable site furnishing such as benches and bike racks for all buildings greater than 10,000 square feet. Based upon the proximity of our site along Route 9, I, I went out there, looked at both, there's very limited sidewalks on Route 9, and there's none in this immediate area.
So, Eric, I'm going to stop you. We require sidewalk on Route 9. It's a New Jersey transit bus route. People walk along this on a regular basis. If you look at an aerial photograph, you could see footpaths. There hasn't been an application that's come before us on Route 9 that's gotten a waiver from putting in sidewalk on Route 9. So, DOT has approved it every single time we've asked for it, as long as it doesn't exceed four foot wide. So, I am not advocating granting a waiver. There's a bus route that runs along this road, there's a bus stop not that far from here.
There's a lot of bike riders.
And, and people walk along this route to get to the bus, so I don't care if it's Route 9 or not, we require sidewalk.
I would say this, that we still would request waivers for the other two, not to provide a public walkway to the proposed building, since we're actually trying to limit non-
That I don't have a problem with, because the public's not going to that new building, but the, but along Route 9, I would request that the board require the applicant put that in.
Okay. And then the other aspect was things like bike racks, benches, and things of that nature. And again, this really isn't an active public building, so we wouldn't envision things like that promoting public usage of this building where we're preventing them from entering the building. So, those two, we would request waivers from.
So, Mr. Ballou, when someone wants to rent a truck and they drive over to the site, do they leave their personal vehicle overnight?
Mr. Say, I would venture to guess that they usually get a ride, and then they leave, they take their personal vehicle, they take the rented vehicle, they bring the rented vehicle back with someone following them to take them off. I don't anticipate, even the, even the gas station that Mr. Ryan was alluding to, that's up on the corner of West Farms across from the Home Depot, they, people are not leaving their personal vehicles there when they're renting the vans and the trucks, et cetera. They're getting a ride there, getting the vehicle, taking both off, getting a ride, you know, getting followed back and then leaving.
Okay.
I, I've also discussed with my client, and he agreed as well, that there'd be very limited, if any vehicles, that would be there overnight.
Okay, thank you.
Parking. So, the existing facility now has 25 spaces that complies. The changes that are going to occur for this site is that the new building will require four parking spaces at a parking rate of one per 5,000. And to accommodate the shunting area and the interface with the existing building, we had to remove three spaces. So, we're proposing is, is seven spaces, and again, these would be employee spaces adjacent to the building, so therefore, we'll have a total of 29 parking spaces between the two areas to be fully compliant with parking. So, we're not asking for any relief in regards to parking, with the exception of that ordinance 188-226F requires that off-street parking be separated from walkways with curbing or bollards. Right now, since we have this all as employee parking, you know, and then we also have ADA access, we're proposing all of this to be flush, so we don't have curbing or bollards being proposed since it's employee parking in that area.
So, we're going to ask you to put bollards in. We've had many a vehicle go through the front of buildings in this town, employees or not, so.
Then, then if, if that's required, we'll evaluate either, we'll comply with either...
The curve is not going to cut it, you need to, curve is not going to cut it.
And just to clarify, we're, we're talking about the proposed building, so it's, we're, it's seven spaces, seven bollards, so...
Yeah.
Moving on.
Understood.
If we could zoom out to see the existing facility. Okay, thank you. Refuse. So, right now, there's an existing refuse enclosure associated with the existing building. The type of use that we're talking about, the U-box storage and all that, isn't going to, we're not just generating any additional refuse of any magnitude, so we feel that the refuse will be addressed by utilizing the existing refuse enclosure, not adding a new one to the site. And then if there is additional refuse based upon the U-box, they would just increase the frequency of pickup by the private hauler. So, we're not proposing any additional refuse facilities, just utilizing what we have already. Lighting, so...
That, that refuse is in concrete enclosure?
It's, I, I'm not sure if it's concrete.
I think it is. I mean, I was here when it happened.
Yeah, I think the, the planning board...
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right, okay.
We're not sure. Not all right.
Well, if it isn't, can it be?
It was a concrete pad. So, the, the...
Not a fence, we want a masonry enclosure.
Fence comes down. Yeah? Okay.
I think it is too, but, the gates in the front, obviously, you're not going to have concrete in the front, but the three sides is masonry.
Yes, that's what it is.
Yeah, that's what I figured.
Okay.
Sorry, didn't know that. In regards to lighting, we're going to have, we're using the slender, down-facing LED lights. It'll be a combination of lights that'll be mounted to the building, as well as for the, the parking in the shunting area, we'll have pole lights ranging from 50 to 20 feet in height. The coverage does meet the minimum requirement of .3 foot candles, except your lighting restriction, lighting requirements are very tight, that you can't have higher than a minimum average of .5, you got to be .3 minimum, and no higher than a half a foot candle average. Ours does exceed that, we're at 1.8 foot candles of average, but with the LED lights, there's still, there is no spillage off our property in that name, in that area, but it's just that we have to have a little bit of a higher average than one-half of a foot handle.
So, Charlie, let's talk about this.
This has been a recommendation that the Rules Committee we've had for like the last, at least since I've been with the board, and I think for a couple of years with, at least with Jack, that no one can physically comply with that ordinance, it's kind of like archaic. There's been recommendations updated to like the IEC standards or whatever, something like that, IES?
Yeah.
Shari, thank you.
So, so Charlie, you know, when I come home late at night, you know, that's the only thing that's lit up at 2:00 in the morning.
So, so what I can say, and Mr. Ballou can correct me if I'm wrong, I, I'm pretty sure that there's notes on the plans, everything's downward facing, they've got like houseside shields, you know, and then also, I think, maximum color temperature of 4,000 Kelvin was on there, I believe, if not...
Yeah, it's either 4,000 or 3,000, I have to take a look.
So, I would say, you know, Shari, right, 4,000 is usually acceptable in a commercial zone?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think the biggest component of that is the hours, right? You know, is, they're going to shut off after, close the business kind of thing?
Because the existing site is on around the clock.
Yeah, so...
I can address that.
Yeah. So, I mean, the existing use, I don't know what the original approval was for on the hours of operation and things like that. Self-storage facilities sometimes can run 24/7, you know, a, a pod storage where you're just literally storing things inside the building?
And there's no public.
And there's no public, yeah.
It's a new building.
For the new building, I wouldn't see why we...
Those lights go off?
Yeah.
At 10:00 at night, and that's it, right?
That's fine. For the new building, all the lights will go off at 10, and there'll just be security lighting in case somebody wanders over.
So, I do give a little bit of background, so hours of operation. Monday through Thursday and Saturdays at 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. is what's anticipated. Fridays, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., a little bit later on a Friday, and Sunday, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And we've just heard that we'd be willing to turn the lights off at 10:00 p.m. is what, I believe we disagreed.
With the exception of security lighting.
With the exception of security lighting.
Can I just restate, I just want to make sure that I got that right. So, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Thursday and Saturday?
Correct.
And then 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Friday?
And then 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Friday? And then 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Sunday?
That's correct.
What was Saturday?
Same as Monday through Thursday.
Seven to seven.
Okay, so landscaping. We went back and forth a lot with your certified tree expert in regards to landscaping, you know, with the uniqueness of the property, you know, we definitely challenged to fit in plantings, well, I think we did a really good job. So what we really did, though, we focused, I guess, along the perimeter here, so here's where the jug handle is. So here's where we have the evergreen plantings and trees that are screening out the parking area, as well as we have trees, and we have foundation plantings in front of the building, and this is where the billboard is as well, we have plantings heavily planted in that area. We've also added some plantings along the back of the property to try to reduce the number of trees that we need to request a waiver from for the tree font. So we were able to replace all of the trees that are required as part of this project, so we are requesting a waiver to make up the difference with the tree font. But besides that, though, we have actually landscaped as much as we feel like we can fit in with the area that we have.
So can I just interject, just to kind of quickly go through landscaping? Do you agree to work with Shari to make sure that she's satisfied with whatever your landscaping plan is?
Yes. Yes, we worked with Shari before, we'll continue to do-
Yes, whatever she, whatever she's asking for.
Yeah, and the only comment that I had was, the plantings in front of the building, some of the heights of those look like they might cause you some issues with your billboard on the site, so I just reviewed that with Shari to make sure it's-
The species don't-
The trees.
Yeah, like 20-foot, 25-foot heights, I think, and the billboard is like along the northern property line, right?
Right.
So might kinda impact the lines for the billboard and defeat the purpose.
Agreed, very good point. With regards to landscaping-
When the township lost its lawsuit on the billboards-
They went up quick.
They went up quick, and we lost a lot of trees during that period of time. So if you own the billboard, and it's no longer needed there, then it can go bye-bye.
As a civil engineer, that's not my comment to respond on.
I think we asked that question multiple times in the course of getting this application to here, and they're not willing to give it.
And they don't own it, it's leased to a billboard company.
How long?
Oh, I don't, we'd have to ask, he's here, we can get an answer for you.
So how long is the lease? When it expires?
I mean, I guess that would be up to them, they're asking for relief to keep it. So Ms. Cofone is gonna testify to that once she gets up there.
But there's gotta be a periodicity of when it expires, no?
Just the lease, but the use is allowed to continue indefinitely. They got approval to keep it there.
So then, just to clarify, that would delete, I suppose, at least the two oaks, not the small ones in the front, but the ones in between the first set of circles and the building, those are white oak trees that I had them put in for street trees, but no, I didn't consider the billboard. It's possible maybe one could remain, I don't know on line of sight, but I would say at least two would have to be deleted.
Or species change?
Yeah, you could have a double row of ornamentals, I guess.
We'll accommodate your experts' recommendations. So you have a very comprehensive landscape ordinance, so there is some relief that we are requesting. So I wanna go through just sort of the details, and then the planner will go through and provide further background.
You don't have to do that, could it?
We don't have to go through that, excellent. So, next, stormwater management's important. Okay, so what we're proposing for stormwater management is that we have an infiltration basin placed at the back of the property, and by having, there we go.
I'm just trying to get to the actual details.
Okay. So we have a stormwater collection system that will bring the stormwater into the infiltration basin, and then that infiltration basin is then going to outlet into the existing wetlands to make sure that the water for the wetlands is still being there and feeding that. The one thing about the stormwater management, it really dictated the grading of our site. So since we have to start really with the basin as the wall was part of our site, and then for a stormwater collection system, we had to build up from there, which means we had to raise the property to accommodate the stormwater management. That resulted in a six-and-a-half-foot-high wall with a six-foot-high fence along the northern property line for a total of 12 and a half feet, where your ordinance allows eight feet in height. So we're requesting relief based upon our constraints that we have, combined with the condensed area of the environmental, we have the awkward jug handle, so to gain the fee to make this drain properly, we are requesting relief from that. We're also requesting relief from the location of the wall, a waiver, that your ordinance stipulates a five-foot setback for the wall, where we're one foot setback. And again, this is an existing, the Atlantic Fence, commercial property, this is not adjacent to any residential properties, it's really just the existing commercial property within that area.
What type of fence is proposed?
Black chain link fence mimicking what's out there today. And that has the, meets the 50% open-air requirements, so that was the fence that we selected.
So, and it's a modular block retaining wall, so your site is higher, so like your geogrid's coming onto your site, not onto the neighboring property.
That's correct.
So, and then, I just wanna put on record, it's something that's come up with the Township Engineering Department. Traditionally, the design for the retaining walls has kind of been deferred to the building department, and it's becoming an issue for construction, 'cause you got like two different sets of plans, and the inspector underfield never necessarily has the retaining wall design. Would your office agree to provide that and put it on the finalized plans that are approved by the board, so they know what their, at least a worst-case scenario for the reinforcement?
Yeah, we would do a, we would do an engineered wall design and place that on our construction details. We'll still have to go through a building permit process with signed and sealed calculations, but that would be, the wall detail would be the basis of our building permit submission.
Correct, yeah, I'm not looking for all the calculations for board compromise, just the detail in accordance with your design, so that way, like I said, it's causing issue with the inspection, 'cause they're out there with, seeing a retaining wall get built without actually a plan set, they just have the 30-page plan set that was approved by the board, so just trying to streamline the process for the township, so.
That seems very logical to me.
I also just wanna point out that we don't typically allow chain link fence. So we would prefer a different type of fence.
Okay, understood. What's the preference?
I mean, I agree that it has to be 50% open, but that's only in the front, not on the side. It could be kind of like a vinyl spindle type or whatever, but we do not typically prefer to see chain link.
So Eric, we could work with the board professionals on a different fence type?
Yes, definitely.
Great.
And Eric, just to finish stormwater management, Charlie has a few technical comments in his report, you're okay with addressing those comments to his satisfaction as it relates to stormwater management?
I have no choice, so yes.
Okay, go ahead, continue then.
The other aspect we have is the stream corridor buffer. So we could zoom out a little bit sort of aside. So your ordinance has the 100-foot buffer on top of the corridor, but it does allow you to average the buffer, as long as you don't decrease it by more than 30%. So what we've done is, we're decreasing the buffer, and we'll call it the north-central portion of the site, where there's a slight decrease, then we're offsetting an equal area by increasing the buffer width a little further to the south. So we're complying with your ordinance requirements by doing buffers averaging for the stream corridor buffer. So I just wanted to point that out. Utilities, sanitary sewer. So one thing that this site's benefiting from is actually there was a new sanitary sewer built along Route 9. The existing building actually is on septic right now. So what the plan is, is to connect to the existing public sewer, and then abandon the existing septic system in accordance with the Board of Health requirements. And of course, we'll connect the new building to the proposed sewer. So we're actually gonna take a building off a septic and put it into the public sewers, we see that as a benefit. In regards to water, so this project's been classified as a New Jersey American Water Company franchise area. So right now, what we're proposing is, is that we have the below-grade meter vault is along our frontage, it's within the front yard. And we're also, though, asking for the ability to place the above-ground water enclosure known as the hot box, also within the front yard area. When I measure it off, I feel like New Jersey, we're within New Jersey American guidelines that the backflow is close enough to the vault, where they wouldn't make us do the above-grade water enclosure, but we'd like to request relief from a necessary structure to be allowed in the front yard, just in case that is a situation where they force us to place that in. So we are requesting relief for that. Also, as well as even the transformer you see in this location here, which is really set back far, but technically it's in the front yard, so again, this is a utility relief for a transformer within the front yard as well.
Mr. Chair, I take no exception to that, this is something that has come up as a, after the fact, with a lot of the utility, they dictate on how close it has to be to the public right-of-way. They're providing landscaping for these facilities, so it just helps, so it's not just some massive shiny metal box in the front yard area, it kinda softens the view of that, you know, we've granted this approval on recent applications similar to this. We had the self-storage up on Sunnyside and Route 9 there that had a similar instance, so granted now, so it doesn't become like a logistical issue down the line, I have no issue with it.
So Charlie, you're saying that with the additional egress that they're putting in, going northbound, that anyone that comes in to use the facility, do what they need to do, they can go out, and they're gonna go out that northbound egress, and they're gonna be shielded from all of this front yard stuff that's sitting there?
Yeah, correct, so, I'll let Mr. Blue testify to this, right? So he said they got their access permit, usually DOT will look at sightlines and sight-trangles at the driveways and everything like that. I don't think that, the boxes are not in the right-of-way, right? They're on the site?
Well, you put them on our site, we can. I think right now, the box may be actually within, I think, actually it's right here, so I believe we'll place it on our property, but it would be within the front yard.
Gotcha. Yeah, and that was shown on the plans that was submitted to DOT?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so if it's DOT's access and jurisdiction, so if they issued the permit and it was on their plans, they didn't take issue, I don't take issue as well.
Okay, great, thank you.
I ran out of paper, what I meant?
That's it. Just a general question, the catch-all, there are other technical comments that we haven't gotten into detail that are in the professional reports of the board. Professionals will agree to work with the professionals to address those comments.
Correct, we reviewed the comments, we don't see there's anything there that we can't address.
Thank you. That's all we have of the engineering, Mr. Chair.
Board members? Mr. Cantor?
Can we go back to the Woodlands management plan again?
Yes.
And I know you agreed to work with Ms. Spiro. How many, it looks like a pretty large area of trees that you're removing from property 100.1, what's the amount of trees that you're removing? And I probably saw, but did the shade tree commission make any comments about your Woodlands management plan?
Shade Tree just said to comply with my comments.
I probably wrote that.
I'll help Mr. Blue out, if you'd like. So they counted that they had 63 trees proposed, I deducted six for the street trees, then we also deducted 34 replacement trees, because when the previous site was built, they were required, you know, to do replacements, and 34 of them are being removed when they're constructing, you know, between the two lots. So they are replanting them, but I'm not counting them off of this new site, right? So then, they're only being counted for 23 replacement trees, so they actually have a contribution of 26,350. Really, what for the site and most sites, it's just based off of the maximum contribution of, well, I was gonna say 35,000, I think the ordinance has just changed, but I'm assuming they're, they have to go by the 35,000.
But they've agreed to that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Blue, the, from here, I've been trying to see where this parking area is gonna be for the box trucks and the trailers, 'cause it's, you said this is a staging area, or?
Yes, okay, so, so right here, so there's different rows, so this would be, the first row is right here, and then there's the second row, third row, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, so there's seven different rows of parking.
Okay, that answers my question, thank you. Mr. Doffier?
Yes, sir.
Since this applicant is in front of us, have they applied for Title 39 with the township?
In the prior application, I don't know, but we have no issue doing it as a condition of-
As a condition of approval, for the entire, for the entire site.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Getting back to the staging area for the U-Haul trucks, will the facility also accept, I don't know if there's proper terminology, but like relocation trucks, so if somebody moved from Connecticut, they have a U-Haul truck, they'll bring their U-Haul truck back to this place?
I believe they would receive that vehicle, yes.
Okay, so how does that affect, I know you gave a bunch of numbers on, you know, what size trucks, how is that, how does that play into how many trucks we're actually gonna have on the property?
When you run out of space on staging, what do you do?
It's a constant circulation. Yeah, but if you take, yeah, but if you take in more than you can handle. Oh, yeah, I agree. I'm just saying. It's always gonna be.
So, and Mr. Chair, what I would add is, I think that Title 39 may help cover that from the board's perspective, right? There's only so many vehicles that can be parked in that shunting area, right? You have fire lanes throughout the balance of the proposed and the existing site, if they were parking U-Hauls throughout these circulation aisles, police would be within the right to go on the site and issue a ticket for violation of the fire lane?
Very true. Also, too, since we have other vendors within the area, what would happen is, if there was no room to store the vehicle here, they would be directed to another U-Haul facility that could receive the vehicle.
Andy, you got that? Thank you.
Well, here's a concern, some of these are vans, right? Small enough to be in a regular parking space, right? So I don't, I don't think any of us would wanna see that, where the facility will use a regular parking space to put a couple of van trucks to help fit a bigger truck, to help you with-
So the issue is to limit the rental vehicles to only that area, not to the other parking spaces on site?
Right.
Correct, the employee parking doesn't have, you have all vans in it, you know, just to, right?
That's fine.
So then the employee parking should state that it's for employee parking only, correct? Charlie?
Yeah, so I mean, I think the agreement is, Sal, is that any of the proposed or existing, like standard nine-by-18 parking spaces, will not be utilized for any parking of U-Haul vans or the like type of, right? Is that an appropriate condition?
That's fine.
Also, this may just be more of a curious question, the, how many of these pods or U-boxes are gonna be into this 17,000-square-foot, like how does that all work? Like, is there a conveyor system that takes?
Approximately 800.
And is it just that one spot where they all kinda get, where they get put onto like a conveyor, and it's-
They get stacked inside the building.
Kinda like cars in a parking garage.
Out of curiosity, is it automated?
Yeah, is that like an automated thing?
Oh, okay, it's not a computerized automated warehouse.
So somebody's actually in there placing these-
Sal, you're gonna have the applicant come give testimony, right? Oh, no, you're not?
Only if they have specific questions, that we don't cover.
Okay, that's all I have.
All right.
Just to follow up on that-
Okay, Mr. Ryan?
The U-Haul box, the U-boxes are stackable, correct?
Correct.
How high do they get stacked?
I believe four high.
Four high. There'll be a fire suppression system inside the building? How much space is required for fire suppression when you're stacking? I know in normal warehousing, you have to have flow-through space. I know in normal warehousing, you have to have flow-through space.
I'll say this much. We'll have to meet all applicable fire codes for the building. So you're right. So this is step one if we get this approved. You're right, we'll go through and get the fire official approval, fire subcode official approval. So this, we'll have to go through them as well.
Okay, so we haven't taken that step yet?
No, we didn't want to, this was the first step to that.
So I would suggest that the board, should they act in the affirmative condition upon them meeting with the fire and complying with all applicable fire codes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mary?
I'm good.
Okay. Mr. Doffieri?
Thank you. Christine?
Mr. Chair, I just want to ask a real question.
Go ahead.
Right, so you're doing the buffer averaging of our stream corridor buffer. There is the flood hazard area behind with 150-foot repairing. There's no disturbance proposed in that?
That's correct. We're not disturbing the 150-foot repairing and flood hazard. We're not disturbing that.
So do you anticipate the need for any flood hazard permit? No, because you're not disturbing that.
So it was interesting. So we got a flood hazard area verification because it is classified as a stream, but it has a drainage area less than 50 acres, so you don't, there's no flood implications associated with a flood hazard permit. It's less than 50 acres.
So in your professional experience, you're not disturbing the preparing buffer and no flood hazard area permitted, requiring for the proposed water?
That's correct.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Charlie.
Christine, you have to get sworn in?
Yes, I do.
Do you swear the testimony to give the truth, the whole truth, and put it to your self?
Yes.
State your name for the record, spell your last.
It's Christine Nizaro, N-A-Z-Z-A-R-O, Capone, C-O-F-O-N-E. Business address is 125 Half Mile Road, Suite 200, Red Bank, Jersey, 07701.
We accept your credentials, Miss Nizaro.
Thank you, Chairman.
All right, Christine, so run with it.
Okay, so this, you've heard a lot of testimony, right? You've heard a lot of testimony about the location and the size and configuration of the subject property, and we are here seeking the de-variant. Self-storage facilities are a permitted use in the HD1 zone where we're located. However, what we're not permitted to have is multiple principal uses on one property. Now, we have three with the existing self-storage facility, the proposed storage boxes, and the billboard make three principal uses. So I can tell the board that in my opinion, the site is particularly suitable to support those. In this zone, you need to have 80,000 square feet, which is about 1.83 acres. This site is 342,292 square feet, so almost seven times the required of the zone. Similarly, you're required to have 200 feet of frontage, where this applicant has 615 feet of frontage along Route 9. So I would submit to the board that I think we're certainly, the site is particularly suitable for the proposed uses. This is a, you know, a fairly highly trafficked commercial corridor. Self-storage is a notoriously sleepy use, so I think that there's going to be no issue with the suitability of the site to support this use. As far as the location of the shunting area, as we're calling it for our storage, that is a technical variance, is that it's our front yard. But if you look at the exhibit that's on the board, right, it really functions as a side yard because it's in between the two buildings. And given the juxtaposition of that area as it relates to the jug handle as well as the two buildings, you know, typically when we think of a front yard, we think of that being in front of our building. So we see here that we have the opportunity to provide some land sweeping adjacent to it, which will create a filtered view, and that it will be situated between the two buildings. So it really does look like it's going to sit in a side yard. So I think the board can be very comfortable that we are not offending the intent of the ordinance, which is not to have those type of trailers and trucks and whatnot parked in the front yard or in front of buildings. Here, we have the ability to have green space in front of both of our buildings, which creates a nice landscape feature along the highway corridor. So I think, given the fact that that's where that's sitting on the site, it is not problematic or offensive to the zone, to the zone plan. I think when you look at what the stated purpose of the HD1 zone, it is to specifically call for and provide uses which are oriented to the highway on lots larger than the, in the HD1, larger than the HC zone. So we certainly are meeting the intention of the HD1 zone here. And the land use law does not ask you to hold us to the standard that there be no detriment, just that the detriment does not rise to the level of substantial, and the benefits of the granted variants outweigh any detriment. And I think that here we are, you know, improving and developing, again, in an area where there is existing development. There's a great synergy between these existing uses on the property with the existing self-storage facility. The trucks that are coming, you know, to the property that are coming here today to get to, in many instances, are coming to the existing facility, and I see no substantial detriment if the board were to grant this de-variant for the multiple principal permitted uses. As far as the billboard, yes, it is a non-conforming use. The zone does not, the, the Hallow Township Board, this does not allow billboards in any zone. They're prohibited through the township, but Section 256 of your ordinance does allow for existing billboards to continue. So we would be asking the board to, you know, to consider that and to allow us to continue to operate that billboard on our property. And the zone in Hallow does recognize that the continuance of existing billboards is permissible despite the fact that they're not allowable. So I do think that the board can look at criteria G, which talks about sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses. I've described to you the configuration of this property and the size of this property, which lends itself to suitability to support these multiple principal uses and these uses, as well as criteria H, which talks about the free flow of traffic. The HD1 zone is a permissive zone that allows hospitals, healthcare facilities, entertainment uses, retail cellroom services, adult daycare, health clubs, indoor recreations, restaurants and restaurants with drive-thru facilities, schools, assisted living facilities. So it is what I would consider a very permissive commercial district, and I think that there will be no substantial detriment to the intent of the HD1 zone, which is to allow for highway-oriented uses on larger lots. And I think that this is quite a large lot, and I see no substantial detriment to the zone plan if the board were to grant the relief. We are also asking, in addition to the bulk relief for the side yard setback, which was also described by Mr. Blue, you see that I think you can grant that under the C1 section of the statute. This is a somewhat irregularly shaped property with environmental encumbrances and the jug handle, so that is certainly creating some sighting issues with where we can place our buildings on the property. So in order to balance, you know, the critical max of development here and to place that structure, I think it's appropriate under the C1 section of the statute to grant that side yard setback. We are also asking for some sign variance relief. In the HD zone, standalone buildings are allowed to have two facade signs. We are asking for the board to consider allowing us four signs. I think that they are appropriately scaled to the size of the building. I like to think that signs break up the architectural, you know, they add an architectural.
Ms. Capone?
Yes.
How big of a sign do you need? I mean, the U-Haul that's there stands out amongst everything else that's there. We're going to add more signage to the?
To the new building.
To the new building, Chairman.
Here, the plan is?
It's an employee-only.
I mean, I would submit that the one U-Haul logo sign, that's one thing, but like drive-in storage is unnecessary since no public is driving in anything, and I don't know why you need four, because you don't, you're not on a corner. So I think you, there's, you could put one, I would, which is what's allowed, which says U-Haul, self-storage, which would tie it to the building next door, but beyond that, I don't see the need for any of them since you're not looking to attract the public there. The public is not going in and out of that building. I just think it's unnecessary relief.
Are we allowed one or two? I thought that in the HD1 zone, if you're a standalone building and you're nine or 33, that you were allowed two.
One, unless you're on a corner.
And you're combining the lots?
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
So it's one lot with an existing sign, and we're granting you an existing one potentially for the other building. What else do you need?
I mean, honestly, the existing sign.
I mean, that's right. Just use the billboard.
We don't need a billboard. But while you're talking about, while Christine's speaking, I'm going to check with my clients about the signage, okay?
We can probably come to a meeting of the minds with a scaled-down sign package, I would think, given the fact that the public are coming to the building.
Don't they need, because of that, excuse me, what? Excuse me. Isn't it necessary for them to have something because of that one roadway going out that's a exit only?
No. That's directional signage.
Just a directional, oh, okay. Oh, you want a building one, okay.
You've heard a representation that the public use of the site is all going to be in the existing building, so like, why do we need all the additional signage on the new building if it's only employees in that building?
It's branding and for people to know that it's, because it's a little bit of a difference.
I don't think you need any additional branding. Everyone knows where the U-Haul is.
I hear you, Chairman.
And Mr. Chair, we're fine with just that one U-Haul sign on the new building.
Thank you.
As proposed on the plan.
So, and Sal, I just, I don't know if you have an architect or if Mr. Blue can just talk. So the orange doors, those are faux doors?
They're faux doors.
They're just architectural features, correct?
Correct. So the only roll-up doors from the loading dock in the back of the structure?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
So there's going to be no sign variances sought then?
Correct.
Correct. Just the one existing?
Correct. So we don't need planning testimony from the other side?
So we're done with that. With that done, I rest my planning testimony.
Okay. Any questions of the planner? You want to open to the public?
Thank you.
Jen, you're good?
I'm good.
We got a motion to open to public. Do we have a second?
Second.
We got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Eileen?
At this time, the chairman has opened the hearing up to members of the public for any questions or comments regarding this application. If anyone has any questions, please come up to the podium, give your name and address. You'll be sworn in.
Not seeing, not hearing any? Motion to close?
Motion to close.
Second?
Second.
We got a motion at second. All in favor? All right. Eileen, we're closed to public.
Public has now closed.
Mr. Doffieri, before you say anything, sidewalk, stormwater, connection to the sewer, Title 39, lights out on the new building by 10, right?
By 10.
What else are we missing, Charlie?
Conforming fencing.
Conforming fencing.
We're going to provide you?
Concrete enclosure.
If it doesn't already exist.
If it doesn't already exist.
We're going to provide you with a schematic and inventory of that shunting area consistent with testimony that we gave. No parking of any rental vehicles outside of that shunting area. Sidewalk, we talked about bollards along the seven spaces. The lighting comes off at 10, as you indicated, except for security lighting. We gave it hours' operation. We're going to work with Shari on the landscaping. The fence, we talked about, we comply with the type of fence. Sewer, we talked about. Title 39, one sign now, and we would meet with the fire official, comply with all applicable fire codes. That's what, and then all technical comments within the course.
And including the fire suppression system that Mr. Ryan brought up?
Correct.
Yes. Charlie?
Yeah, so I would just say, you know, I think this, being that they're consolidating the lots, and it's going to be one sole operator of the site, I think that's a good thing, especially with the one trash closure and nothing new proposed. I think, you know, if it were multiple users or tenants, then it might be a little bit more concerned. The other thing that I did want to ask a question, too, is we ask it on the self-storage facility, traditional, but with the containers, is there any auctions? Like, if someone is delinquent and paying a fee, like, what happens with the contents of that stuff?
We traditionally don't have auctions on the U-boxes. No, no auction on the U-boxes.
Would that be okay for a condition?
That's fine.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. We have something? Mr. Barillo?
The original ingress egress that's staying?
Remaining, yes.
Okay, so you have that, then you're going to have the new egress?
The new exit and then the new?
And then a new, those, that new egress and ingress, and I guess it's an NJDOT, and I guess if they were okay with it, but I was just noticing, they look pretty close together. You know, you're going to have trucks or cars coming out, you've got the jug handle there, not that that really plays in, you've got the light, and then you're going to have cars, you know, or trucks going in. NJDOT is okay with the distance between the two?
This driveway plan was approved by the DOT, and we have the actual permit, correct? So we have the permit, which we, I think we provided, but we certainly can't provide.
Okay.
Okay, so then, summary?
I summarized all the changes we agreed to. We addressed all the comments, we believe, and we asked the board grant the relief and the site plan approved.
So I'll leave one more thing.
Yep. Sorry, one more. Can we ask, any dead landscaping on the original site be corrected at time of planting?
That's fine.
Okay.
Andy, we're good?
We're good, Mr. Chair.
All right, what's the pleasure of the board? I'll make a motion to approve this application based on the finding of facts, and I agree with Charlie, this is a good use because you are consolidating two same businesses and anything on Route 9 and with the sidewalks, which I agree with our planner, is a good thing for Hal. So I definitely approve the application. We got a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, sir.
We have a motion to approve, and we have a second. Eileen? Mr. Hughes?
Thank you, Hughes. Roll call, Mr. Barillo?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Merk?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Chairman Sayre?
Yes. Mr. Doffieri, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a great summer, if I don't see you.
You too.
You're on a winning streak, so.
Yeah, and I'm going to retire. Until tomorrow night.
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 Night, guys. Thank you.
Night, Charlie.
Second? All favor?
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?